Today is Thursday, June 23rd, 2022. Time is 1:30 PM. Officially calling this meeting to order. It is a special meeting agenda. And attending our commissioners Duncan Brooks and Filios. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
I think that would...
I think we'll just handle item two first because I think it'll go a little bit quicker.
Okay, we could do that. So, we do have two items. And so we'll handle... The first one, of course, is Luxury International LLC for lease update. That's a discussion. And the second, which will be taken first, is no limits aviation leases update. And that's also a discussion. So, who would like to lead us on item two? Go ahead.
All right, Stephen, I'll go back and forth. So, where we... Where I knew we left it is Shane and Stephen were going to connect about a property on the south ramp and that one of the three leases would then be terminated. And Stephen has that waiting list going on. So, has that...
I just got an email at 11 or 1:20 response back from my email yesterday that Shane is wanting to swap, basically move leases. So, that one can be terminated and we'll make a new lease for the south ramp. It's going to take some time, but we'll get that one moving forward.
Okay. And then the two smaller lots. So, I did get the paid invoice and I meant to forward it to everybody and I did not get a chance to do that. So, I got the paid invoice for one of them. And I believe it's the one that already has the sewer connections and all that.
That one doesn't have any connect... Only it's a dry lot. There is no sewer connections in that area.
Oh, and I guess there's none needed. Is that...
It's not needed. It's a private lot.
Okay. Okay. So, that one to me is solid. Do you have the number by any chance so we make sure that we don't...
630 if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
It's the lower of the numbers.
It's the lower of the numbers. 640.
640.
Okay. Pretty close. Okay. So, that one I would like to pull off termination since he spent money on the building, since it's not going to require the infrastructure and all that. All right. So, then what is the one that's the bigger of the two?
I want to say it's eight or nine...
So, there's 990, 991.
I think it's 990 is the bigger one and 991 is the smaller one.
Okay. Okay. And so, my understanding and since Mr. Rogers is here, he could chime in here, that with the second one, he's ready to purchase the building and work out a payment schedule for the infrastructure, but he didn't have that amount for the smaller lot because the two were combined.
It's about 21,000, like 400 if I remember correctly.
Okay. So, did you have something to add?
Yeah, well, I didn't know if I was going to ask.
Yeah. Is your button on? Your green?
How about that? Sorry about that. I just thought if anybody had any questions for me. So, I didn't know exactly what that number broke down between those lots. In kind of the way I look at it is we can move forward with that. What I'm going to request of you guys, if we can figure this out, is I'm going to have to set up some sort of a payment situation until I can get towards the end. Broken down monthly or something like that. We're still kind of going back and forth if there's even going to be a bathroom in that hangar because it's a... That is a private lot, so I don't necessarily know if we're going in there or not. But there's some costs associated with that that we've kind of went back and forth. I've communicated with everybody. I didn't know... I didn't interpret that in my lease, but I think we're moving forward. We're all working together to get to that same end goal. So, I'm willing to negotiate that if you guys will work with me to figure out what that... Well, now I know what the dollar amount is, but to make those payments. If we can do that, that's great. And then, yeah, we can... The lot for the lot, so you guys can do those other things. Yeah, that's fine. I think I sent something... I thought I sent something to Stephen. I apologize to Stephen. I just double-checked with Anthony and I talked earlier. And he sent out an email there so we can... Whatever you guys need on my behalf on that.
Okay. So, can we put a date certain, like by July 15th? We have to have everything for this second smaller lot? You know, the building and the negotiation and all that? Because I don't want to...
Yeah, and I don't want to push it. It's been kind of that same thing. So, I've been in this limbo. We're doing it through the same vendor, the AMQS. It'll be basically the identical building of that. We'll move forward on that. I just... We've kind of been in a limbo here for six weeks on my part. I, you know, I'm afraid to pull the trigger on... I'm having to go to a hard money lender rather than a bank, conventional bank, because of the 12 months it was wrote into my lease rather than the 24 months it's going out in current leases now. So, there's been some uphill battles and some uncertainty that I'm not going to put my family in until we come to a resolution on that. So, yeah, I can go back and put together an outline of kind of what a schedule is going to look like on my part from now getting through that ordered. And I could probably come up with a payment plan that'll work, that I would propose to work with on the utilities on that.
Okay.
The other thing that I would like, if I could get it... There's a lot of activity going on on those lots right now. Coming from a construction background, I didn't realize they were going to be on those lots. And there was no insurance coverage for me that I do believe. I'm sure the contractor, it's a very large contractor and has insurance. But coming from that and having somebody pass away on a job site, it would have been great for me to know and for me to have some additionally insured from those contractors. Things happen on job sites.
Sure.
Okay. So, I have a question for Stephen. In the midst of all this, how does this impact of the leaseholders? What are we doing here that's different? Are we running any inconsistencies? I mean, help me out here. We can't afford for all three of us to get into this level of detail, whether it be the airport or really anything else, but go ahead.
You do have some inconsistencies because you just terminated a lot previously. Similar situation. It's slightly different that Shane is... Mr. Rogers is working, is talking to us, but it's still the same general situation of not moving forward through the process of there's not a building on... For example, the smaller lot, which is 991, the commercialized 990. It's not... There's not a building on order. There's not a site disturbance permit. There's nothing... There's nothing moving forward in the plan, in the queue, that we can go and say, here's the... Here's a process. You know, and that's typically where we hold that... The airport is where we're going. As long as you're moving through the process, we're not going to terminate a lease. We're not going to even move forward with termination of leases as long as you're moving in the queue of the process of doing something.
Right. So, if this smaller lot were to be terminated, the person that he would issue the lease to is going to have two years to build. And so, it's kind of we're kicking somebody out at a year and three months.
But willing to give someone else two years.
But willing to give somebody else two years.
You know, one of the reasons I raise this is, and obviously we've seen the emails in support of what you do, Shane, but I also had a phone call from a gentleman. And again, it's a single phone call, but the argument he made is why aren't you guys being consistent? Why are you making an exception here? And basically, that's where I'm coming from. And I don't know that we are, but I just want to establish that we don't have different rules for different people.
If I can address a little bit of that, and I'm not asking for any different rules for different people, and I don't know all the circumstances on those lots. In not placing any blame, the process for me when I started this took much longer than it should have.
Okay.
And I'll assume some of that blame on my shoulders. But it took a long time. In that amount of time, leases went up five cents a square foot. There was just a long process and I don't know... I'm going to assume that the ball was dropped on both sides, right? But taking one more step, and when I started the process, I could have had my option of 50% of the lots on the airport. Literally, when I first sat down with Stephen, he handed me the thing and says, what do you want? You know, and we picked our lots based on what we thought we would be doing. Now, we've had a lot more growth, but the other side of that is I can understand the need for those lots and needing to get built on them and moving forward on that stuff. But on the flip side of that is I spend a lot of time at the airport. I'm not a developer or a single person doing something that seldom comes to that airport. I'm there before anybody from facility... I'm there every morning at 6:00 AM, literally every morning at 6:00 AM. And I don't leave until 6:00 PM at night unless I'm coming here for these meetings. It's just what it is. And most of the time, I don't leave until 8:00. I'm very active on the airport. We're actively moving towards financing and doing those things. So, it's not just a, okay, we're here and I'm just taking up space. Everybody on the airport can see that I'm way overgrown with the facilities that I've got currently. You know, I talked to Stephen about that. I've talked with Leslie, had a great meeting with those two. Stephen brought up some very valid points on why I should do that. But if I was just an average Joe that wasn't doing anything at the airport and wasn't actively moving forward, now in your guys' eyes, it doesn't look like I'm actively moving forward. In my eyes, I'm overwhelmed and I'm working 12, 14-hour days, seven days a week, to get this happen, to grow a business and keep my customers happy as well as keeping you guys happy moving forward. So, I mean, in my defense, if there is a... And I don't expect an exception to that rule, but I'm at that airport more than anybody at that airport. I own more airplanes personally than anybody at that airport. Anybody. I probably own more airplanes than a lot of them together.
I don't mean to cut you off, but I think you've made your point. Okay. So, what's our bottom line here today?
So, I probably would like a date certain where we can get these things in order, where you can tell us the building has been ordered, where you can say, I'm going to have a check for the infrastructure. So, those kinds of things would help me move forward.
And are you talking prior to July 15th?
No, it could be July 15th. I don't have a necessarily... I just threw that out there as a starting point.
I also just sent Shane... I just sent you an email that with the total, that way you have it written, it's 21,648.22.
Okay. I'll work at that. Yeah, if I can have a week or two to look at it and just look at my finances and come up with something that will work, that's all I ask of you guys.
You okay with that? Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Good enough.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So, that's what we're looking at? What, two weeks?
I'll be gone all next week, so it'll be the following...
You're gone next week?
I'm gone next week.
Okay.
So, it'll be at the earliest the week of the fourth or the week after.
Week of... Okay. Seven, four or later. Okay. Are we okay with that item then?
Yes.
Okay.
So, then what I will do is I will pull the two for termination and leave the one.
990 on.
Yes, 990 stays and then pull the other two. Okay. Okay.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay. So, then let's move back up to item one, Luxury International LLC lease update.
Yes. So, Mr. Frazier is here and I had the pleasure of speaking to him on the phone. And then he followed up with the two-page resume, I guess you'd call it. And you and Bill were both copied on that. I think part of the issue that I have with this is when Stan Kraft came to us with this business idea, and it was before this board, there were multiple meetings with Stan Kraft. There was presentations. There was stuff like that. I don't feel like we got that. I don't feel like Mr. Frazier had an opportunity to present to the board about... Because this is not a typical lease. It's not a typical business that we have. And so, I think I probably would have rather, going through all this, getting all these questions answered and talking to people, I think I rather would have had it that way. Stephen, when you were negotiating with Mr. Frazier, was the airport advisory board involved or was it just the two of you or...
It was myself and my staff and Mr. Frazier.
Okay. So, for me, I think I would have preferred probably the board, either the advisory board or this board, be involved in the negotiations because, Stephen, you keep sending me the calculations that your staff did on the storage unit. This is a businessman and I would expect the financials to come from the businessman. So, I think that's kind of been tripping me up as well. It's just a very unusual thing. It's not a cut and dry. And so, I guess that's kind of where I've landed, is I don't feel like I have the full picture.
Bill? Stephen, do you have the full picture?
He's going to be operating a storage unit and basically for every dollar that they collect, they're going to pay us 10 to 13 cents.
So, is that a yes or no?
That's a yes to me. It's... That's... They're completely... Mr. Frazier will be completely operating the facility. We are... It's an in lieu of rent situation. It's...
So, you're talking about a percentage of revenue?
Yes. Income.
Okay. So, you're not dealing with profit?
Uh-uh.
Just a percentage of revenue. To Leslie's point and with regard to the advisory board, you've got a lot of wheels in motion. After five years of dealing with this, probably the most complex entity that we have to deal with is the airport. And we have a lot of stuff to deal with. And so, with something like this, I'd like to see it go through the advisory board and have them come forward with a recommendation and even do the analysis. And I'm not referring to stuff that's going to take... I'm not referring to a process that's going to take months, but it's, I think, makes it easier for us. Now, the other question that I have is, and this might be an outstanding proposal, but why are we not opening this up for general bid? Or should we? And maybe part of that is a legal question too. Go ahead.
We've mentioned... I've mentioned it to multiple people that have come in and that when they've talked about different land opportunities. We had two people submit proposals. Mr. Frazier was the better one based upon the assessment we did and also that Nancy Pluff did. So, we looked at it as let's move forward with the one that has submitted something to us to move forward with it. This land has been sitting vacant for 80 years. Nobody's done anything within that 80 years. We're just basically spending $20,000 to $30,000 a year in cost of maintaining it to do this.
So, help me understand. 20 acres of grass costs you $20,000 a year to maintain?
To mow it, to spray weeds on it, to staff time, yeah.
Seriously?
It costs us a lot of money that...
$1,000 an acre to maintain mowing it?
We have to mow it between 12 to 20 times a year.
Oh, 20 acres?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Bill, anything?
I just... I think we're way too deep into this and I think it's important we allow the airport director to be the airport director and not second-guess him.
So, everybody requires accountability and I'm accountable to the taxpayers. And this is a 50-year lease. This, after almost probably everybody in this room is gone, this lease will be in play. So, I want more information and I would like a presentation either to the advisory board or to this board to understand exactly what we are getting into with revenue sharing. This is not usual. This is not boilerplate. It's unusual. And I think we owe it to the taxpayers, to the people at the airport, to the people around the airport, to do our due diligence.
I think Stephen knows accountability to this board.
On the 50-year lease, is there... Excuse me, is there no escalation?
So, the escalation is the 10% or the 13%. And it's... There is escalation if Mr. Frazier doesn't develop it out. It goes automatically to market rate. It stays at market rate.
Go ahead.
So, if it doesn't... So, it's been five-acre blocks typically is what you see developments-wise. So, if he only develops five acres out, the other 15 acres immediately goes to... After five years, immediately goes to market rates.
Okay.
If he develops all 20 acres, it'll be at 10% of his income and five cents per square foot. And it's whatever he sets his rates at, we'll take that 10%.
So, there's no minimum. I mean, this is... To me, when I look at this, and I mean, I would love to have a better expert look at this, there is no downside to Mr. Frazier. It's the county is taking all of the risk as far as the... He could develop all 20 acres and only maintain half... Half occupancy. So, I want something a little bit more detailed in the lease. I want to know more about what are we getting into and what is the coverage that the county has? So, I just think there's a lot more work that needs to be done here. I'm not saying it's not a good proposal. I'm not saying anything like that. But when you're talking 50 years, when all of us are going to not be here, I'm really concerned and I want to do due diligence when you're talking about this length of time.
I want to make sure I understand that, your comment there. When you said 50% occupancy, are you stating that you're believing that somebody is an operative facility that's for-profit at only 50% occupancy and never have any... Try to fill it up all the way? Or is that... I want to make sure I understand what you're asking on that. Is that... Because based on the conversations, Mr. Frazier said, I'm planning on making this profitable for him, which is profitable for us, is the airport. You can chime in.
Yeah.
You need to push your button.
Press the button on your mic.
Button right there. Thank you.
You can push it a little away from you because it's...
There you go.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd appreciate any of these questions. If they were directed at me, I'd certainly like to answer them. You saw a kind of an abbreviated resume of whom I am. I've been in the aviation business for more than 50 years. I've had a lot of experience with various airports around the country and around the world. When I look at this, your question seems to be, well, if this gentleman builds storage units on this property, would he leave them 50% full or 60% full? As a businessman, first of all, why would I do that? Second point I'd like to make is my partner and I... Unfortunately, my partner's not here today. He's going to substitute for me on the trip to Rotterdam here next week. Our direction here is simply to support our charitable organization. Profit from this will really not be directed to me or to him. We have an organization that supports young children, mostly minority children. We support several organizations relative to animals. I think I mentioned, we just came back from Thailand. We support and rehabilitate elephants. We're just aligned ourselves with an organization in northern Thailand. I lived for two weeks with peasants in northern Thailand over Christmas. We're going to support some children there. So, the majority of the income from this will be directed to our charitable foundation. I'm not a young man. I'm probably older than any of you up there. So, my time to make a lot of money is probably over. And the engagement that I have and my partner has is probably directed a little bit differently maybe than what you think. So, our intent here is sincere. It's well-directed. I have all the respect in the world for Stephen, who I didn't know two months ago. But in my opinion, you're very fortunate to have him here. I've seen a lot of people in his capacity and he's one of the best I've seen. So, that's my take on this. I'm certainly willing to listen to whatever you have to say. In the process, I was impressed with the direction relative to what Stephen represented as to where your airport's headed in the future. I brought in High Plateau Capital, which is a financial organization out of Seattle I'm affiliated with. We may have some intent to do some significant things here at the airport that we could present to you at a later date or we can go in a different direction. But frankly, I'm discouraged by what I saw from the beginning. We made every effort to put our good foot forward here and accommodate the best we possibly could as we've seen here. So, again, I reflect back to you folks as to what are your expectations from me?
I thank you for that, Mr. Frazier. And I don't want you to take this personally because it has nothing to do with you. So, as a successful businessman, you understand that entering into a long-term business partnership, which sharing revenue, sharing profit is similar to that. I mean, if you fail, we fail. So, it is a partnership in that. It's not just a straight business deal where you're paying, you know, a yearly sum or monthly sum and that never changes or it changes with escalation. So, I think you understand that when we're talking about the county, so this property doesn't belong to me, doesn't belong to Stephen, it belongs to the citizens, the taxpayers. And so, I have to do my due diligence. So, I figure as a businessman that you would understand entering into a long-term relationship that we would want to have, you know, understand what the expectations are on both sides. And so, just not having a presentation from you to the Board of County Commissioners for this project, I think, is kind of what's lacking. And I just feel like I've been playing catch-up the whole time. I don't know what negotiations have happened. When the original lease that you signed, I mean, it had quite a mistake in it. And so, that mistake's been corrected, but there's still other things I think that we could probably do better and, you know, have this go forward.
From my experience in leases that are similar to this, to me, it looks fairly simplistic. I didn't see anything that really stood out to me or to my councils. So, I'm still not certain exactly what the direction is here. A similar lease we had in Evansville, Indiana, where we had properties that were inside and outside an aeronautical zone, and we just donated that back to the city of Evansville. And we created a museum, an aeronautical museum there now for the people in that area. So, and that was a 25-year lease that I didn't think I'd probably live to the end to see, but I did. And so, again, our intent here is above board. And Stephen asked me for some financials, and which I provided him. We do business with several banking institutions around the world. And I think I presented a placement letter in the amount of $10 million. I thought that would be more than sufficient to at least ignite the process here.
Sure.
So, again, I'm still a little confused by... I think I understand your intent. I'm not sure I understand the basis of it.
So, the financials. So, you're a businessman. When you go into a new venture, do you have a business plan? Do you have it listed out on, okay, this is how much we're going to spend in capital? This is how much profits we're expecting? Do you have a financial plan to back up your business plan when you do these ventures all around the world?
Well, let me say this to you. First of all, business plans cost money, usually in something like this. After lease signing, the process of due diligence is not without expense. From this particular property in about a 15 nautical mile radius, you have 22 active storage facilities right now. Out of those 22, I'd say 60% of them would be comparables to this. Development of this land, if it's done properly, a million dollars per acre. As far as a business plan, a business plan is something that you construct after the fact, when you have something to work with. Right now, I have nothing to work with. So, expending capital, significant capital, and even placement of funds costs money. So, before, I would be prepared as a businessman to spend that kind of money. I'd want to see that the process that I'm following is accepted, approved, and signed.
So, let me make a suggestion here. By the way, your causes are noble and I commend you for that. And that's not merely rhetoric on my part. Why don't we do this? Because I don't like torturing a process. Let's get the advisory board, after all, that's what they're there for, and within 30 days, have them come forward with a recommendation based on Mr. Frazier's proposal.
Okay.
At least that way, we have a little more to go on and we can make a decision. You guys okay with that?
Sure.
Yeah. I still think it's dragging it out, but...
It's fine.
They have a role to play, Bill.
I didn't say they didn't have a role to play, but if the advisory board has got to weigh in on every decision Stephen makes, he can be dragged down slowly.
And I'm not suggesting that... And I'm not suggesting that at all. There is 100 leases a year gone through the process, not a problem. This is special.
And this will not be the only one. We just received a lease application for another eight and a half acres to the east of the gun club, on Ramsey and Lows.
So this is exciting, because we can get it done through this process, and then we'll have something set up, and it'll go smoother from here on out.
And, yeah, this is, you know, we're basically embarking on a new direction, and I think to Leslie's point, when it comes to the day-to-day operation, nobody's questioning. Not at all. That's your job, and that's what we have our faith in you to do, so, but for something like this, which could be something that's going to take us into a whole new direction, taking 30 days to have the advisory board look at it is, should not be a problem.
Well, we'll attempt to, if Mr. Fraser's okay with the delay, we'll attempt to put it into the July 14th meeting, I believe, is our next meeting, if that's okay.
13th is a Wednesday.
It's the 13th.
Well, when you say, is it okay, certainly it's okay. What I would say to follow up with that is, I tried to provide Stephen with some placement of funds that he could look at. This is a foreign bank. Actually, it's the Bank of China. There's a definite cost to that for me, because I have to place a certain amount of funds, in this case, $10 million. That cost of money continues through this process, so I'm not certain that the value to me is worth going forward. I think so at this point, but, you know, I'd like to get some assurance here that we're on the right track if we're going to continue with this.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not saying that it's not a good deal. I'm saying that I don't think the lease right now is written is in the best interest of the Cooney County taxpayers, and I'd like to see some different elements to it, which could probably be answered by your presentation to the advisory board.
Yeah, that's where I'm confused, as to the different elements. When I look at this lease, what I see frankly is an agreement between my company, one of my LLCs, and the county. As participation from the county, as far as development goes, or the process of development, or the implementation of that development, I don't see a role for the county. What I do see a role for the county is certainly in the participation is whatever you call it. You can call it profits, you can call it gross income, whatever you want to call it's fine with me. My only take here is, I'd like to make some money for the causes that I presented to you a few minutes ago. So, that's my intent. I'm still not clear on exactly what you're looking for.
Well, maybe I can form it in an email and send it to you.
We can discuss it now, I'd be happy to discuss it.
No, I'm not prepared to discuss it, so...
So what we'll do is have Stephen commission the advisory board, have them look at it, and have them come forward with a recommendation to us. I certainly will take that recommendation seriously. I don't have an issue in the direction that Stephen is going. He's trying to raise revenue. I think your cause is noble. I just want to make sure that it's consistent with the direction that the advisory board and the county has for the airport. And I don't know that we have a vision. People will often ask us that. My vision for the airport is where the market takes us. I can't sit here and make a claim that in three years, we're going to have commercial service, or that we should have a joint powers board, even though in principle, I agree with that, but the fact is, where's the market taking us? And I think what you're proposing is very much in that direction, but I'd also would like to hear from the advisory board, where they come forward and say, this is our recommendation. And it may very well be that they say, let's accept what Mr. Fraser has proposed en masse, and that's what we potentially go with. So if you can task the advisory board, 30 days, that's it, no delay, they have to come forward with a recommendation.
We'll have, we'll bring it on the 13th meeting, and we'll talk about it. I'll speak with Mr. Fraser about it after this meeting, and we'll go from there.
Okay. So what's our deadline? 30 days?
We'll have something no later than the advisory, the updated advisory board meeting.
Which is?
The 20-some, the 20...
Of July.
Of July.
30 days, hence. We will take that seriously, and your proposal, which we already are.
Just one further comment.
Sure.
In the process of due diligence...
Yes.
Before myself and my associates at High Plateau Capital came here, I did do my element of due diligence on your airport. I attended an airport meeting just to introduce myself, where Stephen was president, and I didn't know Stephen. But the one thing I would say, again, I'd like to reiterate, is that in my own experience going through this many, many, many times, domestic and international, I'm impressed. You've got a young man sitting there who's progressive, he's well-directed, and he's the reason that I elected to actually bring High Plateau Capital here to take a look at the airport. So, I can't say enough about the man. I don't know him, we haven't had lunch together, he's not my best friend, but he's a professional that deserves your respect.
And I'm, and I can share with you, since Stephen was hired back in, was it 2017? I had a hand in that hiring. It was the prior board, the three of us. We had 64 resumes, and to your point, and I will say it publicly for everyone to hear, not one came close to his. So, speaking for myself, I do appreciate it, but we also have to do our due diligence.
Good choice.
Okay, then? So we're going to wrap up the meeting?
Yep.
I've got 2:08, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, thank you, everyone.